Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing on the Committee on Housing and Buildings. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you. If you wish to submit testimony, you may do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. That's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we can begin.
I am Councilmember Pierreina Sanchez, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings. I want to thank you all for joining today's hearing and also for your patience as we are getting into a later start. We will also be, we will be today examining the construction safety within our city, and we will also be hearing a number of bills related to this topic. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues from the City Council who are present. Councilmember Barron, Councilmember Hudson, Councilmember Aviles, Councilmember Kagan could not be here because he has, he is chairing a concurrent hearing. There's no denying the importance of the construction and real estate industry in the city of New York. The Department of Buildings oversees the safety and compliance of 1.1 million buildings within our city. Just last year, last fiscal year, 28,203 homes were completed in new buildings across the city. This is not to mention the number of commercial sites that were constructed and other building typologies, with a total of 168, 423 permits issued in year 2021. There's, there are an estimated 15,000 firms that are involved in the industry, from special riggers to metal fabricators to telebooms to steam fitters, pipe layers, and the list goes on. And the accompanying human infrastructure is substantial. An estimated 375,000 workers fill the many jobs and human hours needed to fulfill the work of the industry. Of these, the demographics are poignant. Only 8.7% of all construction industry workers are women, down from 9.5% in 2019, and yet trending upward from 8.4% in 2018. While the sector is diversifying, we have 63.3% of all construction workers who identify as non-white, which is relatively unchanged from 2019. In 2017, immigrants held 59% of the jobs in the construction industry in New York City. Nearly half came from Ecuador, Mexico, the Dominican Republic, Jamaica, or China. Overall, the construction industry had its highest share of foreign-born workers of any sector in the city of New York. Real estate is critical to the city. Real estate is to New York City what oil is to Texas. And when we dig into the unionized versus non-unionized workforce within the construction industry, we find heartening and troubling demographic patterns. We find that black workers are far more represented in the union construction workforce where they account for 21.2% of employment, and that in the non-union construction workforce, they, they account for 15.8%. And minorities overall now make up 55% of all New York City blue-collar union construction jobs. Hispanics are heavily overrepresented in the non-union sector, accounting for nearly half of all employment. Their younger workforce shows us that these, the, sorry, that the trends within the younger workforce shows us that the trends are going in the right direction with respect to diversification in alignment with the population in the city of New York. Commissioner, I want to take a moment to thank you for your follow-up, your follow-through, for you and your staff from the last hearing and giving us all the data and information that we requested. As construction activity increases, so does the potential for construction-related incidents, making worksite, worksite safety a key concern for all New Yorkers. We're continuing to confront the economic recovery from the, from the COVID-19 pandemic. Construction will be and remain a key priority as a key component of the New York City workforce. We need to build up the housing stock. We need to build places that will hold, host more jobs, more schools, more activities for our young people, our homeless, and our inadequately housed neighbors. But a just recovery also requires us to center worker safety and dignity within the industry. The City Council has made great strides to this end, in 2017 with the passage of Local Law 196, which was sponsored by then-Councilmember Jomani Williams and now public advocate. It specifies certain training and qualification requirements that those engaged in construction and demolition must meet, including that workers at job sites requiring a construction superintendent, a site safety coordinator, or a site safety manager must have a total of 40 hours of site safety training. I look forward to today hearing more about the compliance with this piece of legislation and how DOB investigates non-compliance. Despite these legislative strides, of course, our city has a long, long way to go. DOB's own 2021 construction safety report noted 712 incidents, 505 injuries, and nine fatalities, seven of which were the result of worker falls. It is tragic anytime that a worker suffers at a fall, suffers a fall at a job site. It is all the more tragic knowing that worker falls are preventable. As such, I'm very interested to hear today about DOB's fall prevention efforts, as this is the leading cause of death and injury on sites. To the families of those that we have lost, my deepest condolences. We can and must ensure that what happened to your family doesn't happen to others. And we have to interrogate piece by piece, all pieces, all parts of the information that we have available about what happened in each incident. A 2020-published audit by the Office of the New York City Controller, however, concludes that DOB's controls over handling of complaints need improvement, specifically with respect to timeliness in responding to and following up on complaints at every stage of the process. DOB, according to Controller, then-Controller Stringer, did not consistently perform initial and second inspection attempts of complaints. And that was in 2020. So the reporting is dealing with 2019, prior to the pandemic. Inspections of hazardous conditions that it previously identified were also not inspected a second time in a timely matter. In addition, when DOB received certifications of corrections from respondents stating that the violations have been corrected, the agency did not perform the required reviews in a timely fashion. And finally, DOB did not ensure that a random audit of inspections, which aren't, performed on a sample of certificates, are, to determine accuracy, were performed in a timely manner, if at all. I look forward to hearing about how the administration has taken these criticisms into account and is making changes to improve site safety. We cannot meet the city's housing needs, as you know, that I am very passionate about as, as this council is. We cannot meet the city's housing needs without forgetting the people who are building it, the workers. I believe this City Council and DOB will work together to push forth legislation and policy that will have a real impact on construction safety. And I know that with your 90-day commission, the meetings are endless, but the work is ongoing to improve the agency. With robust enforcement, which brings together, which brings a greater dignity to our workforce, we will have a better New York. I would like to thank my staff, my chief of staff, Sam Cartenas, and Kadim Robinson, as well as our Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Audrey San, Jose Conde, Charles Kim, Dan Krup, and the entire Finance Division, which supported the committee report for this hearing. With that, I'm going to lean over to my counsel. Okay, so with that, I'll turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez and members of the Housing and Buildings Committee, my good friends, former colleagues, especially Councilmember Barron, my neighbor, my district used to join his in East New York in Ozone Park. So it's good to see everybody, and it's, it's interesting, but it's good to be on the other side of the, of the counter here, but it's good to be here. My name is Eric Ulrich. For the record, I am the Commissioner of the New York City Department of Buildings. I'm joined today by Joe Esposito, a recently appointed Deputy Commissioner of Enforcement, and also my Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs, Guillermo Pantino, who ironically used to be the counsel to this committee as well. So a lot of familiar faces here. And other members of my senior leadership team, my chief of staff, Nadia Stevens, is here, and we may have one or two other folks from Buildings here. We're pleased to be here to discuss the department's work to keep construction sites safe. New York City is home to nearly 1.1 million buildings and tens of thousands of active construction sites. With the support of nearly 1,600 dedicated employees, the department works to support development and construction, the construction industry as it creates new residential and commercial spaces. Safety is central to this work. Safety is at the top of our minds as the code development team works with the industry to craft updates to the construction codes, as our plan examiners review construction plans, and as our inspectors visit construction sites and existing buildings. The regulations that the department enforces exist to protect those who live, work, or visit our city. I'm pleased to report that the construction industry continues to rebound from the COVID-19 pandemic, with more construction jobs being filled last fiscal year than in the previous fiscal two years combined. Last fiscal year, over 150,000 construction jobs were filled with the department, an increase of 25% over the previous fiscal year, and we're seeing that trend continue this year. We know far too well that with more construction comes an increased risk of serious incidents, which is why I appreciate the City Council bringing this issue to our attention and with this hearing today. The City Council has been a key partner when it comes to keeping construction sites safe, and I look forward to our continued work together and partnership. Earlier this year, we issued our second annual construction safety report, which covers calendar year 2021. The report provides deep insights on construction safety trends in the five boroughs and examines department initiatives that lead to declines in construction-related incidents and injuries during that time. The 2021 report shows that the multi-year decline in construction-related incidents in the city has continued in 2021, dropping another 10% compared to 2020 and over 40% since 2018. We will continue to issue these annual construction safety reports because they provide the industry with important information regarding construction-related incidents, including an overview of incidents that could have resulted in serious injuries or fatalities. While the decline in construction-related incidents we have seen in recent years is promising, the department is committed to doing even more to drive down incidents, and we will continue to work with its partners in the industry and in government to accomplish that goal. In June, the department implemented a new requirement that licensed construction superintendents cannot be responsible for more than five major construction jobs at any one time, which represents a reduction from the previous limitation of 10 jobs. Furthermore, by 2026, no construction superintendent can be responsible for no more than one job. This measure ensures that dedicated site safety professionals have the capacity to provide appropriate oversight at the jobs for which they are responsible, and we are confident that, that this will improve safety at construction sites. We've been working very closely with the members of the construction industry that are impacted by this change, which resulted in a true, in a smooth transition from 10 jobs to five jobs for those who are impacted. In order to build capacity, the Department of Buildings recently updated its rules to provide a pathway for site safety coordinators and site safety managers to become construction superintendents, a change that has been well-received by the industry. In 2024, the department will also be requiring more site safety supervision at larger construction sites, with a new requirement that construction superintendent and a site safety coordinator or site safety manager be designated for such sites taking effect. To help ensure that safety regulations are being complied with, the department also continues to conduct its proactive, unannounced inspections of larger construction sites, which includes inspections to ensure that workers have appropriate site safety training where such training is required. The site safety training requirement for construction workers and supervisors was fully phased in last year and requires that workers have at least 40 hours of safety training and that supervisors have 62 hours of safety training. We are very pleased with the compliance we are seeing in the field, and we thank the construction industry for their collaboration over the last three-year period during which time this was phased in. Finally, early next month, a new set of construction codes will be taking effect. These construction codes continue the department's efforts to improve and enhance construction safety requirements that apply to all construction projects. The department is hard at work implementing the new regulations, including updating our DOB NOW system, and we will continue to issue guidance to the industry to advise them of changes that will impact their work in the future. All of these measures are the result of a collaboration with the City Council and the Department of Buildings, and we look forward to working together on additional common-sense measures to improve safety at construction sites throughout the five boroughs. We are in the middle of the Adams Commission, a 90-day commission convening stakeholders from labor, industry, the nonprofit sector, and city government agencies to produce a comprehensive blueprint recommending structural improvements at our agency. We're already receiving very promising recommendations from our industry partners, many of which we plan to act on in short order. The goal of this initiative is to further modernize the department and make sure it works for all New Yorkers now and in the future. We look forward to keeping you updated on this work, and we will certainly need your partnership to implement the reforms that require legislative changes. And Chair, I want to take a moment just to thank you and your staff's participation in many of the sessions that we've been conducting over the past 60-odd days. So thank you for your participation and your leadership. Turning now to the two bills before the committee today, Intro 267 and Intro 268. Intro 267 would require that employer identification cards be distributed to workers as part of pre-shift safety meetings required at construction sites. Such cards must include the name and contact information of the employer, the name and contact information of the applicable site safety manager, and the address of the work site. The department is supportive of providing workers with this information and understands that it could be particularly helpful for workers who may only be employed at a particular site for a short period of time. We would like to work with the committee to identify the best way for this information to be communicated to workers as the requirement that this information be communicated before every shift may be too frequent. On Intro 268 would require that the department inspect sites that have received a stop-work order every 14 days until such stop-work order is lifted. Such inspections may require that at least three inspectors be present during a single inspection. The department is not supportive of this legislation as it, as it is not a productive use of our inspectorial resources to visit a site that has been issued a stop-work order where no construction work may be occurring. Additionally, the requirement that a minimum of three inspections, three inspectors be present to confirm that work is not occurring contrary to a stop-work order being issued places a significant strain on our limited inspectorial resources. These resources could instead be used to respond to emergencies, complaints from members of the public, or to perform proactive inspections. Response times for such inspections could all be compromised should this proposal move forward in its current form. The department would welcome the opportunity to discuss this proposal further with the sponsor of this bill and the members of this committee, to further understand its goals so that we can work to address any concerns this committee may have. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify before you today, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner. So I'm going to ask just two sets of questions, and then I'll turn it over to colleagues again, because I appreciate you all, and I know that we're, we've gotten, gotten off to a late start here. So the first set of, the first question really is around the Adams Commission. So it has been 60 days of, of just about the 90. So when, when can the public and the council expect to see the, the recommendations from the Adams Commission? And is there anything that you would like to highlight today as far as what you've been hearing?
Well, again, I first want to thank you for your participation. You and your staff have just been terrific in terms of providing legislative proposals and ideas, and most of those, I think, are grounded in the important constituent work that you and your colleagues do in your district. So it, it actually has a practical application, and we appreciate that. We are more than halfway through the Adams Commission 90-day period. We're very pleased thus far with many of the recommendations that we've received. And at the end of the 90 days, the Buildings Department will produce a preliminary report, which will outline actions that will require City Council, local law, legislation, actions that the mayor may want to take via executive order or has the ability to take and do unilaterally, and then rulemaking internally that will have to do with the agency through our rulemaking process. So hopefully, we'll be able to categorize the recommendations and the remedies that have come up as a result of all these working group sessions into those three categories, and, and we look forward to the council being a partner in that. We can't do it without the council. There are many code revisions which, for legal reasons, require legislative action. So your, your cooperation, your participation, and your willingness to be a part of this commission and making it a success is critical to what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner. So, so second, and recognizing that this might be, you know, some of the topics that are being discussed in the, in the 90-day commission, but going over the controllers, then-Controller Stringer's audit from, released in 2020, I mentioned it in my testimony, but there were a lot of criticisms within that audit around DOB's handling of complaints and re-inspections that, that are sort of required by the agencies but are not, are not taking place. So can you, can you speak to changes that have already happened and how the administration, how DOB is thinking about these inspection, re-inspection, lack of timeliness allegations, and, you know, sort of concerns that came out of Controller's report?
Well, you know, as, as was mentioned, we were happy to cooperate with the Controller's audit. We do on a regular basis, and we're happy to provide our own internal data and information that could help shed light on where, areas where improvement is needed. But I'm going to ask Guillermo Patino, our Deputy Commissioner of External Affairs, to address more specifically some of the points that you raised in the Controller's audit. And, you know, some of the things that have come up have already been addressed, have already been fixed. Those backlogs no longer exist in the form that they did prior to the pandemic, and we're very happy about that. And where there are areas for improvement, we want to work together to address those areas. But generically speaking, the data that is included in that report is not the most current data available, and I'm, I think that our current data reflects more accurately the progress that we've made and the level of responsiveness that we're able to provide when it comes to responding to complaints that we receive.
Yeah, just speaking generally, I think we've done a lot at the agency since the audit period. So since 2018, for example, we've seen a significant decrease in construction-related incidents, about, it's been about 33% drop in injuries. We established a construction safety compliance unit at the department in late 2018, which focuses on conducting proactive inspections at larger construction sites. They check for things like making sure that workers are complying with the site safety training requirements. We've also fully implemented Local Law 196 as of March of last year, which requires, as you mentioned in your testimony, in your opening statement, 40 hours of training for workers, 62 hours for supervisors. And we've also updated our construction code since then to strengthen safety requirements throughout. And as it relates to following up on violations that we've issued, particularly Class 1 violations that represent the most serious conditions, we're following up on those in, in 60 days as, as the code requires now. And we can certainly provide the updated data on that information as well. And finally, I'll also add that, because you mentioned it in your opening statement, as it relates to auditing certificates of correction, the council also passed a bill following that audit that requires that we audit at least 15% of the certificates of correction that are submitted for Class 1 conditions, and we're meeting and exceeding those targets as well, and happy to provide the, the data on that as well.
I, I think I aged that with you, Guillermo, when I was at, when I was working at City Council.
I think that's right, yeah.
So musical chairs. Okay, so that, that is encouraging to hear, and I'd love to see, you know, updated numbers on, on that front, inspections and re-inspections. But just continuing on this, and then I'll turn it over to, to some, some of my colleagues who want to ask questions, and I'll come back around. But the most recent MMR highlights that there was a decrease in construction inspections completed in fiscal year '21, from 162,135 in '21 to 130,837 inspections in fiscal '22. So in the context of, you know, meeting these requirements, including the 15% audit of the certificate of corrections, what is causing this decrease? Will DOB be able to meet the target of 140,000 inspections for fiscal, fiscal '23?
Well, I, I would like to say, generally speaking, that in 2021, most of our workforce, like so many other city agencies, was returning to full work week and in-person, I don't want to use the term regular, but regular work schedules, and so that might have resulted in some delays at some, especially earlier in the previous calendar year. But for the most part, we have maintained excellent service levels and quick turnaround times. We've reduced the number of days and reduced the backlogs that existed in certain categories in response to Level 1 and Level 2 violations. So we're very pleased with the current level of service that we're providing, and we've reduced the backlog and the amount of days that it takes for inspectors to respond to certain types of complaints. Most of the complaints that we receive come through 311. I know that you have the data regarding the number of complaints over the years. But we also receive complaints directly from community boards, from local council members, or churches and nonprofit groups, or houses of worship. So we respond to those as well. That, that's not always reflected in the data, and we do try to prioritize those as well, so.
I appreciate that. Can you just highlight the number of complaints, DOB, the total number of complaints DOB received in 2021, 22?
So going back to 2029, we, I'm sorry, 2029, that's a couple of years away.
Two years away.
And 2019, we received via 311, 93,356 complaints. In the year 2020, again, counting for COVID, we received only 80,204 complaints. That's roughly 13,000 fewer. In 2021, we received 81,000 complaints, just starting to come out of the pandemic, so not inconsistent with 2020, but slightly more. And so far, year-to-date, this year, we've received via 311, 64,471 complaints to 311, and we've issued four, over 40,000 oath or ECB violations, summonses, as a result of those, so those 311 complaints that have come in. So, you know, it's important to know that a lot of our work is proactive, it's not just responsive. It's not like we only go out when someone calls 311. As I mentioned in my testimony, a lot of the work that we do, particularly around safety, is proactive, unannounced, routine, multiple visits to active, to thousands of active construction sites throughout the city, and those are not in response to any complaints that we get. Those are just to make sure that work is being done according to plans, that people have the proper safety equipment, and that everything is code compliant. So everything that we do, safety is at the heart of everything that we do, and we are reactive, but we are also a proactive agency when it comes to enforcement.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, and last piece on, on this, so there's a, there's a target of 140,000 inspections in the MMR, and recognizing that the most important thing is what is actually happening on the ground, but do you think that DOB is on track to meeting the 140,000 inspections this year?
Assuming that the trend continues and the construction industry continues to be a boom for the city and, and the numbers keep going up, we have adequate staffing levels. We've reassigned certain people that were involved with development or plan exam into our, the ranks of our inspector divisions and into our units to make sure that they have the coverage that they need. Our deputy chief of, deputy, I'm sorry, Deputy Commissioner of Enforcement, Joe Esposito, I always joke with him that when he was chief of the New York City Police Department, he, he was in charge of 36,000 police officers, and now he's in charge of roughly 600 buildings inspectors. So I think we're up to the task, and we have the right supervision and the right support, the right training. We just welcomed a new class not too long ago. We have another class graduating. When is the class graduating? It's in November, I think, right? November? I think we have another class graduating in November, and we're looking forward to bringing on our new inspectors, and they're receiving great training, and they're going to do a great job and help us accomplish the mission. But what we do is very serious, because it definitely keeps New Yorkers safe, the people that work on the job sites and the people that live in the surrounding area and in the community. We want to make sure that everybody's safe. Safety is at the heart of everything that we do, and we're not going to allow any amount of construction activity to stand in the way of safety.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to acknowledge that we are trending in the right direction in terms of worker safety. We have a ways to go, but it's definitely getting better. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Aviles for questions.
Sure. Good afternoon. Whoops. Okay, good afternoon. Good to see you. In the vein of safety, I represent District Thirty-Eight, and this August, we had an inappropriate use of an articulating boom truck that was being used as a crane.
I was there.
Right? And it just missed a glass building where my daughter and many other children would have been in that building. It damaged a home and a building next door to it, but thankfully, no one was hurt in this situation. One month later, in the Bronx, another situation of an articulating boom being improperly used as a crane. In fact, I've seen it in my district several times over again, since now I know the distinction and what to look for. I know that the agency was, I guess there was a timeline to develop some rules around proper usage of the equipment. So I'd just love to hear if those new rules have been developed, and would love to hear a commitment from your agency to promulgate those rules and to ensure us that the agency is absolutely choosing people's safety over profit from an industry that seems to not be very keen on regulating this equipment and trying to skirt actually licensing of proper crane usage. So I'd love to hear where those rules are. I'd like to know whether the agency is committed to enforcing those rules and to ensuring safety absolutely first over industry profit.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. And I was at that particular incident, and also the one that happened about a month later in Greenpoint that did result in a fatality where.
I was referring to one in the Bronx.
Yeah.
Where there wasn't a fatality.
So there was one where there was an excavator, it was all over the news at the time, where the bucket that normally gets attached to the arm of the excavator wasn't properly secured, and it, we believe, it accidentally detached from the arm, and it crushed a worker who happened to be underneath. They were trying to use it to move some heavy piping or construction material from one side of the job site to the next. My point of bringing up this particular situation and the one, referencing the one that you just mentioned, is that human error is always a factor, and that is something that is a challenge for us and for the public. You know, if people are not going to use construction equipment or machinery the way that it is manufactured to be used, there's no amount of regulations or codes or safety requirements that could be put into place that will prevent that from happening, other than us doing a better job of policing these job sites, which we're doing. And just so you know, too, the second that there is a serious injury or fatality involving a construction worker due to improper use of a piece of equipment or truck or boom crane, as you mentioned, we send inspectors out to every single job site that is under that contract or that they may be working on simultaneously to make sure that there isn't a pattern of irresponsible reckless behavior taking place, or that they are having workers who don't have the proper training or don't have the skills to use certain equipment, that they're not going to cause other fatalities or other serious injuries. So we send them out immediately. We issue a stop-work order, first and foremost. The Department of Investigation and our own investigators, our engineers show up at the job site to conduct a thorough investigation. But simultaneously, we have inspectors going out to every other job site that's under that contract or affiliated with that contractor to make sure that no one else is in harm's way. The situation with the boom cranes is that those trucks and those pieces of equipment are constantly changing. Every year, they're coming out with new models, and the manufacturers that actually make these things, that make these pieces of equipment, the ones that they're making today, in some ways, you wouldn't recognize them from five or six years ago, because they're constantly evolving. The instability involving these pieces of equipment, I don't want to say almost always, but on a regular basis, whenever one of them tips over, it's because they don't extend the arms out all the way, which are what stabilizes.
They're not cranes.
They're not cranes. They're not supposed to be used as cranes.
Exactly.
And these contractors unfortunately use them as cranes, because they think that it's easier and cheaper to use them to transport materials from the truck on the ground to the second or third story where people are doing work. So it's an improper use of construction equipment. The people that are operating it don't have the level of training that they need, they're not totally familiar, and there's almost always human error involved, which causes one of these incidents. So we're on the lookout, but we require the help and the cooperation of the public, too, to help us.
So Commissioner, are you committing to increasing regulation and enforcement around proper usage of this equipment and licensing?
We are meeting, we've met with the makers of the equipment, we've met with the industry, we've met with many of the labor groups that are also concerned by the use of unskilled labor with this type of equipment. And we should be coming out with something next year, but I can't get into too much, because there will be certain pieces of equipment that will fall under the new regulation and others that won't. So I can't get into too much. But the good answer is that, yes, our code development team is actively working on this, is looking at this, and you will see additional regulation of equipment like this, but not all pieces of equipment that are on a particular job site.
And is that going to be coming up? My understanding was it was supposed to come out this November. Are you saying that that's, it's going to come out in a year from now?
I think it's probably more likely to come out after the new year.
Okay.
November seventh is the new code adoption, and there is no, I mean, there are additional safety codes going into effect, but not specifically concerning boom cranes.
So we missed the deadline for boom cranes in this upcoming?
It's not about the deadline, it's about some of the challenges to regulate them. They're typically not regulated in other jurisdictions either, but there are other similar types of equipment that are being used as boom cranes. We call them boom cranes, that's really not the technical name for them, but you will see some regulations coming out next year.
Okay, I look forward to that.
And we'll keep you posted.
Hopefully, there aren't any more.
Guillermo will keep you posted.
Near misses or fatal accidents, because we're trying to catch up.
They should not be used as cranes. They're cheaper to rent, but that doesn't mean that we should be using them inappropriately.
Yeah, and if our message to the industry is that it will be unacceptable, and we will enforce it to the highest possibility, I think the industry will also shift its practice. But a lack of enforcement tells them they can do what they want, which they are currently doing, and putting New Yorkers and workers at risk. So I look forward to very stringent, rigorous safety standards.
We will follow up with you, and Guillermo, hopefully soon, will be able to give you a better timeline. But we are working on it. I've sat in on some of those meetings.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. And just a quick follow-up on that, just for clarification purposes, because we don't have the rules today, does that mean that in those, in the instances that happened, there was no action by the city against those, the folks who were running those construction sites?
Oh, no. That's, nothing could be further from the truth. Not, they receive the most stringent violations and the strongest possible limitations that we could put on a job site, and also the number of violations that they receive. In some cases, we issue violations to the property or building owner and the contractor and sometimes the operator of that equipment if they are using it appropriately and they're not supposed to be using it. So tens of thousands of.
What are some examples of some of those violations and?
They could result in, if they're aggravated, too, they could, they could trigger a multiplier effect. You could see a hundred thousand, I'm just throwing a fictitious, not a fictitious number, but a generic number out there. I mean, it could be a hundred thousand dollars in fine and a full-stop work order. And, you know, for the contractors and the developers, time is money. They don't want to be shut down. It takes them, you know, sometimes weeks to get reopened, especially if there's an investigation involved in DOI and the District Attorney's Office, if there was a fatality, for instance. So it's in their best interest to act safely. They want to follow the code, they want to be compliant. But when they're not, we hold them accountable. We never look the other way. We never look the other way, and we have some pretty hefty fines that are at our disposal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilmember Dinowitz, do you have a question?
Yeah, that was my question, is what do those fines look like? I mean, we see, I mean, we see it all over the city with city agencies levying fines on developers, and it's, in many cases, just the cost of doing business for them, that it would still be cheaper for them to, in this instance, use articulated booms and pay the fine than actually do the right thing. So do you have more details about what those fines are and if they actually serve as disincentives for these operations to happen?
What I think would be helpful is we should provide you a list of the most common violations that we issue, the section of the code or local law that they are related to or emanating from, and then the fine brackets, the range, that it's twenty-five-hundred to twelve thousand, five hundred, if it's an aggravated condition. So our inspectors from construction safety compliance and construction safety enforcement teams, and also ERT, our emergency response team, they issue these fines at these job sites. And if you receive seven aggravated violations, for instance, that could be eighty thousand dollars in fines in one day. And now you, and now the job is shut down. You're losing time, you're losing money, you have financing on the line, you may have business partners involved that are, you know, concerned about the financial impact. So it's not only the fines that we levy and the violations that we give, that we issue, it's also the amount of time that you will lose, because all work must cease at that moment.
Right. Well, I would, I would love if you can share those numbers and then what those fines actually are, because for, I guess it's the importance of sharing the data, right? For all the times that they might get a stop-work order, if they're skirting laws to get things done more quickly.
Yeah.
And the fines are just a couple bucks, but they're getting the job done more quickly.
Oh, I wish.
They're actually, they might be saving money by breaking the law, and we don't want them to do that, so.
I wish I could give you a different answer, but the reality is that these fines are not a couple of bucks. Some of them are so hefty, for instance, work without a permit, we don't issue those to one- and two-family homeowners now. We used to. And I think what we need to adopt more of is a progressive scale, and I've said this to folks at City Hall, that how we hold a homeowner accountable for putting a sink in the basement without a permit as opposed to a contractor that's building a luxury condo building should not be the same. You know, that those folks who are just trying to better optimize their home, which is the biggest investment they've ever made in their lives, you know, shouldn't receive a six-thousand-dollar work without a permit violation, the same way a contractor who's trying to do work without a permit would receive one. So even though the violation is technically the same. So starting last year, we stopped issuing work without a permit violations. We give letters of notice of violation. People have to correct it within a certain amount of days, get the proper permits, file the plans, what have you, and we give the homeowners the ability to actually be compliant, code compliant, without banging them over the head with a six-thousand-dollar fine. So that's just one example. The work without a permit is a six, is a six-thousand-dollar violation. That's just one violation. In most cases, we're finding there are four, five, six, seven, eight, nine violations. Some of them can go up to twelve, fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand.
Right. I mean, proportionally, it's interesting, again, I would love those brackets, those numbers, because proportionally, a six-thousand-dollar fine for a homeowner is way worse than a twelve-thousand-dollar fine for a luxury condo. And you mentioned, you know, you'd like to see more, I guess, progressive scaling. And again, the importance of the fines isn't so the city can make money, it's to disincentivize bad behavior. So you want to see the, that progressive scaling. Is that something the administration is taking seriously? And, you know, is there any pressure from anyone, anywhere, given that we need to build more housing and houses need to go up, to maybe, you know, look the other way or forgive some of the things so that more housing can be built? Those are two sorts of, two questions.
So looking the other way is never an option. It's never.
That was the right answer. Okay, cool.
Yeah, we would never do that. It would be illegal for us to do that. We have to follow the code and the laws that are passed and the laws that are in the charter. So we would never look the other way. We would always enforce safety regulations fairly and equitably across the city. It doesn't matter if you're a big developer or you're building, you know, affordable housing, little homes and as part of an affordable housing project. So my point is that we, on the development side, try to make it as easy as possible with our project advocates, with our borough commissioners, and our chief plan examiners and the plan exam team to help people get on the path to compliance and code-compliant construction. But if people are going to break the code, not follow the law, and engage in any type of illegal construction, we will hold them accountable, and some of the fines that we issue are quite hefty. They are, they are significant in the dollar amount.
Thank you. Just that other part of my question, which is, while you'd like to see a progressive scale, is that something that's being taken, seriously considered by the administration? Or is that something that you're?
Well, that's something that the ninety-day commission is focusing on now, and the administration is a part of that, and our friends in the mayor's office are participating and helping us facilitate this process. And I think that the mayor wants to be tough but fair in every way possible with every agency. So, you know, we can't turn a blind eye to illegal construction. It could be deadly.
That's right.
And so we have to take this seriously. But again, the type of enforcement that we might provide for a one-family house in your district in the Bronx, you know, in Pelham Bay, or one- or two-family house, is not the same enforcement that we would provide for a high-rise going up in Manhattan, at two different, very complex construction, bigger development, more involved there. So I, the law has to treat everybody the same, but the schedule of fines and penalties doesn't necessarily have to be the same. Most of the people that live in homes and in the outer boroughs are new New Yorkers, immigrants, people of color, people that might have language barrier access. So, you know, we have to be as helpful as possible when it comes to getting them on the path to compliance. We're there to help, we're not there to hurt.
Yeah, from Wakefield to Riverdale in my district, we have single fam, we have single, two, three-family homes, and I, you know, would like to see them, as you said, be treated more equitably than I think they're currently being, being treated, and would love to keep our, you know, keep our community safe. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. I want to also acknowledge that Councilmember Caban has joined. We were also joined by Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Feliz. Councilmember Aviles, you have a follow-up?
Yes, yes. Just a quick follow-up on the articulating boom situation in terms of enforcement. In the, in the situation that happened in my district, it was a school construction authority project, and the, the operators of the boom were like a subcontract of a subcontractor. How far does the regulation go to addressing the situation of subcontracted-out entities along the chain?
You know, the permits are issued to the contractor or to the developer, and it is, if they're, the GC on the job, just to be sort of colloquial, the GC has to assume most of the responsibility for the work that's taking place, with the exception of electrical and plumbing and elevator, which requires those specific contractors to basically put their license on the line, so to speak, and accept responsibility, God forbid there's a, an accident, okay? But aside from some of the subcontracting work that takes place, that's common in the, in the industry, those workers have to have the same level of safety training that any worker would have. They have to have OSHA cards, they have to have the forty-hour safe, site safety training. And there are other folks on the job site that are supposed to be responsible for maintaining a certain level of safety, that people who are operating certain types of construction equipment are actually skilled and knowing how to operate them. We really make it so that it's in the owner's best interests to be compliant and to follow the rules and to operate machinery properly and safely, because if things go wrong, it will result in tens of thousands of dollars in fines, violations, a full-stop work order, an investigation, delays. So it's in there, even if they're only concerned. So it's in there, even if they're only concerned about profits, it is in their financial best interest to follow the rules and to follow the code. I think that's an important point to make.
Great. So I'd just love to follow up and understand fully what the enforcement after, on that particular project was.
We can get you a full report. Guillermo will follow up with your office.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Aviles. So continuing that thread, general contractors. So what exactly does it take to get, to obtain a general contracting license in the state of New York? And what is the city's role? What is DOB's role in that licensing?
So on our website, we detail the 24 or 25-odd licenses that we issue as a department. Everything from licensed plumbers, licensed mechanical engineers, licensed electricians, licensed general contractors, licensed sign-hangers. There's so many different types of licenses that we issue. Site safety managers, site safety coordinator, et cetera. All of those categories and all of those job titles have very specific criteria that we require. Generally speaking, there's a background investigation. There is insurance verification. There are several forms of attestation, making sure that people have the proper safety training. In some cases, if it's for a crane operator, for instance, it's much more extensive and they have to provide proof that they received a certain training from certain accredited schools and they have a number of years of experience. There might be affidavits involved from previous employers to attest to their, them having a certain amount of years of experience on the job, doing that job or using that equipment. So the general contractor's license is not an easy license to get. We don't give these out like candy. I mean, we make it difficult for a reason so that we are vetting out and removing people who don't know anything about construction, who pose a risk to themselves and others. So it's a rigorous process, and it's on our website. If you go to licensing, and they'll show you exactly what requirements are there, and the members of the public can go and see that. But it is not like, we don't give it out like candy, and we do that for a reason. We take this very seriously. If we're giving someone a general contracting license, they're going to be using equipment and machinery that could hurt somebody. And we want to make sure that they know what they're doing, they have experience, the proper experience, they have the proper training, and that they're not posing a risk or threat to them or to anybody else on the job site.
Right. And under what circumstances does DOB rescind a general contractor license?
Very good question. So through our administrative enforcement unit, if we receive the referral or a complaint, or we, through our inspectors, observe equipment being used improperly by a contractor or by an individual, and we conduct an investigation, it's generally speaking very swift. We could rescind someone's license within a couple of weeks if we have sufficient evidence. And we do that. We do it more often than I think people think. And it's not just the general contractors, but we also review the plans that are being filed by engineers and architects to make sure that they're following all the right rules, that they are, that their plans are code compliant and that they're not doing anything illegal and nefarious. And in cases where that is happening, we refer those cases to DOI and the local district attorney's office. So it's not uncommon. It happens throughout the year. It's a very active unit. And we do now hold accountable those contractors who are not following the laws and the code.
Got it. Thank you. So what are the most common violations when an accident, injury, or death occurs at a construction job site? What does DOB find are the problems that are occurring on these job sites?
Oh, it depends. Every accident is different. It depends what type of accident is involved. I mean, just to give you an example, there was a case several years ago where an individual was working in a pit and the proper bracing was not in place and the walls had collapsed on that individual. And when they tried to dig out the dirt to try to save him, they actually decapitated that work. It was terrible. It was all over the news. It was a terrible situation. Several weeks ago, someone had fallen through an empty elevator shaft. They weren't wearing the proper safety harness, or the railing was not in place where it should have been. So in cases like that, where there's slip and fall, which represents the majority of construction-related incidents, I don't want to say that it's human error, but in some cases, that is the case. If they're not wearing the proper harness or the, in other cases, if it's the contractor, the developer's fault, where they are not putting the proper railing in place or not maintaining the proper signage, for instance. You know, we hold multiple people accountable, and the fines, as was mentioned previously, are significant. So it all depends on the type of accident or incident, and sometimes they are deadly.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. So turning to Local Law 196 compliance, very, very good to hear that DOB is at 100% compliance. But just drilling into what exactly that means. So, you know, the state comptroller released a report last year that sized the workforce, the construction workforce in New York City at 375,000 workers. So to date, how many construction workers have completed? How many unique construction workers have completed the site safety training requirements?
I'm going to allow Guillermo to address that.
Sure. Thank you. So to date, we've issued 191,000 training cards to workers. But just to clarify, so site safety training is required for larger construction sites. So there's many, many construction workers who don't require the training. So you only need, generally speaking, the site safety training at sites that are larger than 10 stories or at sites where you're constructing a new building or demolishing an existing building. So the 191,000 cards represents the workers that are working at the larger sites, not at sites like one- and two-family homes.
Thank you. That's helpful. So to date, how many construction workers has DOB found that did not complete the site safety training requirements? Or specifically, right, that they're working on a work site without that card? On a work site that requires the card?
We can try to get that number for you, but I think that that number might be hard to determine because if I'm a smaller contractor and I make a living by just replacing roofs on people's garages in their backyard in Queens, maybe I have a GC license, but it's just me and my son or me and my brother-in-law that do that type of work. It may not be required because that's, you know, the smaller contractors that do that type of work would not be required to have the same level of training because they're doing smaller projects and neighborhood jobs. They used to call them handy men. It's not an appropriate term anymore. I don't think people use it. But, you know, the neighborhood handy man, for instance, or handy person is not the type of person that would fall into that category.
And that makes sense, but are there no instances of DOB going onto a work site and finding that workers, you know, categorically just don't have the cards?
If they don't have the card and they're on the job site, if they don't have their OSHA card or they don't have the proper safety training, they're going to receive a violation. I mean, it could be a stop-work order issued too, a partial or a full, depending on the other type of violations that we find. So you have the numbers. Okay, good. See, that was fast.
So since the requirement took effect in 2018, that's the same year we launched our construction safety compliance unit, we've found about 1,500 sites where workers didn't have the required training. And total, it's been about 13,000 workers that didn't have their training. And as a result of that finding, we've issued about 39,000 violations. But just to clarify, whenever we find an untrained worker, we issue three separate violations. One violation goes to the general contractor for the construction site. Another violation goes to the owner of the site. And then the third violation goes to the employer of the worker, if that's different from the contractor. And they're about $5,000 apiece. So it is a pretty hefty penalty when we find an untrained worker. And then in order to cure that violation, they also have to demonstrate that they paid for the worker to receive the training. But again, those 13,000 workers have been since 2018 when we started enforcing the requirement.
We've expanded the number of course providers, too. It is important, I think, and noteworthy that it's much easier now to get that training than it was two or three years ago, for instance. So there really is no excuse for a general contractor or for any major project manager not to make sure that their workers are provided with the proper safety training.
That's helpful. And so in the past, fake OSHA cards were an issue at construction sites. Is this still happening? Does DOB have rates of fake construction or fake cards at sites?
At any time we uncover illegal or, you're using the term fake, but in some cases, the workers don't even know that they're fake. You know, they think that if I pay somebody $500, my friend on the job site, he's going to get me a card so I can show up to work the next day. They're being taken advantage of. Those workers are being exploited. They're paying for a card that is not valid, that obviously was not issued as a result of them taking a safety course that is required. And in cases like that, we just referred one to the district attorney several months ago. It was a major case and can't go into the details, but there was, actually, there was a school that was a legitimate school, but they were not a course provider for that type of safety training, but they were selling the cards to people. And so we immediately worked with our friends and our partners in the Department of Investigation and law enforcement and the local DAs, and they pursue criminal charges. It's not uncommon. At any time when workers are being exploited or taken advantage of in any way that we believe any type of criminal action is taking place, we refer immediately to the district attorney's office and to DOI for a more thorough investigation and hopefully a swift prosecution.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And so you mentioned that the number of trainers, of course, providers has grown. So how many do we have, say, by borough?
Guillermo can-
And how many have, well-
He's the numbers guy today. He can look up that. But aside from that, I want to make a previous point that I forgot to mention about those workers who are being exploited. We also give them a period of time to get the training because we don't want to affect them, we don't want to affect their ability to provide for them and their families. So, you know, we say, "Your card is fake. You may or may not know that this card is not a real card. You did not, we proved that you did not receive the proper training, and you have X amount of days to go to receive this training, and your employer has to pay for it." So we, in every way possible, make sure that the workers receive the training. That's the most important thing, that they can-
And how are the rates of curing those violations? Do you find that these employers-
They're very high because the job is shut down almost immediately, most cases immediately. And they can't be reopened until they cure that. And as part of the curing process, they have to provide the training, real training, validated, real training, that we make sure that they actually get it. That's on.
Yeah, also, just to add to the illegitimate OSHA cards that you mentioned earlier. So I think the first and second training milestones were a little challenging in that the first milestone, an OSHA 10 card proved that you had the required training. The second milestone, an OSHA 30 card proved that you had the required training. But now that we've fully implemented the law, everyone has to have a site safety training card. So those are not issued by OSHA. Those are issued by DOB-approved course providers. So now we have a universal card that all the workers have on construction sites. So the fraud that we were seeing initially is getting better because of that. And we, and in terms of the number of course providers that we have offering site safety training courses, it's 130 total now.
And what's the breakdown by borough?
I can follow up with the breakdown by borough. I don't have that.
Okay. And so in order to get your site safety training card, you're also checking off boxes for OSHA requirements? Like they're subsumed within what DOB is requiring in these trainings?
Yeah, they could include an OSHA 10 or an OSHA 30.
If it's a 40-hour course, it's above the OSHA requirement. So it's actually in addition to, it's above and beyond what would normally be required by OSHA.
Yeah, if you have an OSHA 30, then to complete your 40 hours, you're getting eight hours of fall prevention and then two hours of drug and alcohol awareness as well. And then there's about a two dozen different training topics that a worker can choose from if they have the OSHA 10 and they have to make up their 40 hours. So they can choose topics that are more relevant to the work that they conduct.
Four-hour scaffolding, et cetera. There are different, more specialized safety training they can receive in addition to that.
Got it. And is this training with these 130 providers, is it in person? Is it virtual? What are you seeing in terms of just how folks are accessing the courses?
It's a hybrid of both. I mean, COVID, obviously, people had to get the site safety training certification. So it was a challenge during COVID, and they had transitioned to a digital lesson plan. And then virtual, thank you, virtual, yeah, live virtual training. But then, you know, there's a hybrid version, and then there are folks who don't want to do anything on Zoom or Teams, and they want to come in and sit in a classroom and do it the old-fashioned way. So it really is depending on your level of comfort and the access that you have to a course provider and how they want to do it.
Yeah, as Guillermo said, it's 130 course providers. Over 50 give live virtual training if they need it. And again, it's done in 14 different languages also.
That's great. And does DOB audit the course providers in addition, like after licensing them?
Yeah, so Local Law 196 does require that we audit course providers. So to date, we've audited all course providers and some multiple times already. And we perform two types of audits. So one is sort of a desk audit where we're checking to, we're checking their records, making sure that they're complying with record-keeping requirements. And then the second type of audit that we conduct is that we sit in the classroom and observe the training, make sure they're covering required topics, that the training is appropriate and it complies with our course provider requirements. So we've audited all of our course providers to date.
And what is the process for the, sort of like the cards actually to be released? To, whether it is the, are the course providers the ones that are issuing the cards? Or is it the work sites? How does that work?
It's the course providers that are issuing the card.
Okay. I've heard concerns that there are delays in course providers and then in turn, workers receiving those cards. Can you talk about what some of those, what might be some of the causes of those delays? Have you, has DOB heard these concerns as well?
So initially, when we started requiring the site safety training cards, every course provider was doing it a little differently. There wasn't a central system, so to speak, to get the cards issued. But now we have a third-party provider that all the course providers are using. So it's a central place for a course provider to check what training a worker has received, if they've received the required training to complete their site safety training card. And then the cards are issued through that system as well, and we moved to that system this year.
And, okay, so with respect to intro number 267, what information does the city? I know you said, Commissioner, that every day might be too often to provide that information to workers. But what information does the city currently require an employer to provide to construction workers? And how often?
So most of the information that the bill is requiring is already available publicly on a construction site. For example, on the construction fence, that includes information about the contractor, the work being conducted at the site, the site safety professional, and also on the permits that are issued at construction sites, that information is available. But we share the concern that workers don't have something to walk away with when they're leaving a construction site, particularly when it comes to like the day labor community that might only work at a site for one or two days or a few weeks. We think it's helpful for them to walk away with this information, but not necessarily before every shift. So for example, when a worker arrives at a construction site, they're required to receive a site safety orientation, so maybe that's a good opportunity to do this. Or just when they're stepping on a work site for the first time. But before every shift might be too often.
Got it. Okay, all right. Those were actually my questions. So with that, I think there are a number of follow-up items that my colleagues and I have asked around. So look forward to the follow-up on that. But I want to thank you so much for your testimony and look forward to the next hearing.
Thank you, Chair.
We will now turn to testimony from members of the public who have registered to testify, both in person and via Zoom. Please listen for your name to be called if you are joining via Zoom.
Please listen for your name to be called if you are joining via Zoom. At that point, you will receive a prompt to unmute yourself. Please accept the prompt and, and begin. In the interest of time, public testimony will be limited to two minutes. We will begin with Charlene Obernauer, followed by G Lafayette.
Starting time.
Hey, sorry, that happened fast. My name is Charlene Obernauer. I'm the Executive Director of N Y C O S, the New York Committee for Occupational Safety and Health. And I am testifying today in support of the proposed legislation. And if you don't know who we are and what we do, one of the most notable things that we, we do in terms of this industry is issue an annual report called Deadly Skyline. And that report talks about the construction fatalities that have occurred and makes note of why our agency feels that those construction fatalities have occurred. And we know that more needs to be done to create safer construction sites. Data has shown that there are high levels of worker fatalities in New York State and New York City. And N Y C O S has found that non-union construction sites are more dangerous and also that Latinx workers are disproportionately impacted by unsafe working conditions. Intro 267 would require the distribution of employer identification cards. And we feel this legislation is important because so many workers who are victims of wage theft, mostly day laborers, don't have accurate information about their employers. And it makes it difficult to reclaim wages and makes it difficult for inspectors to find out who's responsible in case of worker safety and health issues. Intro 268 is also important and we support it. The inspections would be conducted on major, excuse me. There would be stop, where there are stop work orders, at least every two weeks, there would be coinciding inspections. And I want to raise the name of a worker whose life might have been saved if this legislation had been in effect. Holger Molina, age 45, died in April of 2022. He was working on a 17-story development that will be the tallest building in Ridgewood once it's built. He was moving material when he slipped and fell 20 feet from the ground to the basement below. And the deadly fall followed an incident at the site in February 2022 where a gate, where a fence gate fell and hit a worker and a stop work order was issued. I feel that if, if intro 268 had been in effect, the site would have had regular inspections after the stop work order had been issued, potentially saving Mr. Molina's life. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And a, and a quick follow-up question. So you heard the administration's critique that each day might be too often to share this information. What, what do you, what do you think about that critique?
It's interesting. I, obviously, I, you know, support the perspective of the D O B. They're the ones doing the work, they're the ones doing the inspections. But there does need to be some kind of regular follow-up with these stop work order, order sites. Because if there isn't, we know that construction continues, you know, on, on the low. Like, kind of, no one knows about it, but people in the community then make reports that construction has continued. And if you actually look at that particular example on that site where Holger Molina lost his life, there were numerous calls from the community to D O B about work continuing despite the stop work order having been issued. Now, I assume, and I'm sure, that D O B, you know, continued to do inspections because of these, of these calls. But we shouldn't be relying on, you know, the public to, to make these reports to D O B. We really should be relying on D O B to proactively investigate when there are stop work order, orders issued to ensure that, you know, they're not doing the work anyway.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
We will now turn to G Lafayette, followed by the individual from the Bronx Community Board, number eight.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, my name is G Lafayette. I am a native New Yorker. I am here today not to speak necessarily about the building regulations in construction, but more so to speak about the inadequate services that are being afforded to average New Yorkers such as myself. I'm seeing a lot of affordable housing that is being displayed and put up. I'm seeing a lot of new buildings that are being constructed. And the preface is that this is supposed to be affordable housing for average New Yorkers. However, this is not to be the case. What tends to be happening is that housing is asking for 40 times the income of the person applying or in a credit score that is out of reach of most people who have credit debt, college debt, student loans and other things that prevent them from being able to afford this. I feel as though this is not incentivizing people who want to have independent living or want to afford living in the city. And this is detrimental to people who show up every day at jobs to service other people who come here. And it is disadvantageous for us all as a people in the sense that it is preventing us all from being stable and getting everyone progressively together. It is also contributing to some of the issues that are happening in our neighborhoods and our communities when it deals with poverty or lack of resources and lack of equitable income or services to us all. So I'm here today to speak up and advocate for this and to ask that the people that are serving our communities do more than just say that we are working on these issues and create actual solutions to further progress all of us as a community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really, really appreciate that. Certainly a hot-button issue in my community because none, none, nothing that is constructed almost essentially is affordable to our folks with a median income of $17,000 per worker. So I want to appreciate you and, and I don't want to say that we're working on it because you just said that's not what you want to hear. But it's absolutely, you know, what, what I can say, there's, there's different levels of government that need to get involved here. The federal government doesn't give us enough money because of the way that they define affordability. Like you said, you know, you, you go and you apply for this, this housing and next thing you know, it's like your income is, is not enough, but it's supposed to be affordable for you, right? Part of that is because of the way that the federal government defines something called the area median income. So it's something that we're fighting to have the feds change so that it can, you know, change the way that we can then finance more housing here. But we have to do more on our own at the same time that we push for, for others. So thank you, thank you so much for testifying.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Bronx Community Board, number eight. And could you please, for the record, state your name before you begin? Okay, I believe this individual is no longer on Zoom. If there's anyone else who's joined via Zoom who would like to testify and has not yet been called on, please use the Zoom raise hand function and we will call on you now. Seeing no hands, I will turn it back over to the Chair to conclude the hearing.
Great, I'd like to thank my colleagues who joined me today, the staff who helped in preparing this hearing and all of the public who testified on this important topic, as well as the administration. Thank you all for your participation today.